It's a bit like, to me, like, each time the trailer, it comes unfinished.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I do apologise about the change of the day. I think it was explained here that the board was booked by the church itself for a meeting, so we'll not be too embarrassed. So, we'll move on. So, item number one, apologies for absence. I think we've got a couple. Have you guys captured a few?
Yes, both accepted absences, that's fine.
Okay, item number two, declarations of interest in addition to members who registered as interested. Everybody needs to fill it in here. Okay, item number three, the receipt of a report from Scotland Yard.
Thank you, Chair, we need to have this. We've got a lot to report. So, actually, I was away for a week during March, and it's been, it seems to have been a very short time ago, it was my last report, this one, but during March, we had fourteen F-16s from Abi Island, pretty much with the whole bunch, I've waited for years. Fourteen of our aircraft were the F-35s, were deployed in Poland throughout the entire month. In fact, the last support from that deployment arrived back at Lake Heath today, so they've just been there now, as bad as Poland. Towards the other month, we also had some F-15s going to Greece to do some training there as well. And throughout the month of March, the F-15 seen models from the 493 fighter squadron continued there, divested shares with aircraft going away from Lake Heath as well. And finally, from our perspective, we did have a couple of our F-35s go over to the Netherlands during March to go and do some cross servicing training with the Parvination Center, the Dutch Parvination with the F-35 programme, then across the distance, cross servicing stuff during last month as well. In terms of sort of other stuff that's going on from the Queen's Platinum jewellery perspective, so they're starting to get requests for support for events in the station, we're looking to consolidate there maybe next week or so before then widely publicise that out across the station. Particularly around the parish tracts, if there's support for getting requests for support from you guys, then I will try and prioritize those and make sure that we get some support from the station if we look for any events to be required. The other thing, for me personally, last month, we went to Southend to West Suffolk College, had a really good visit down there. The intent of that was to try and strengthen the relationship between the college and the USF4s, particularly from STEM activities, so science, technology, engineering, maths, we're trying to develop those passions, but also to look for opportunities, potential opportunities for work experience for those who are in the college and across the Lake Heath and do some work experience, do some work experience with the USF as well. Have any questions for the board this month?
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I have noticed the private cheque's gone about today. What's that all about?
Private cheque?
Yeah. Have you seen it?
Yeah, it looked white.
Yeah, it looked white, I've seen that. Unmarked private cheque.
It was a lake.
All over Brandon. Step back to the floor.
It was coming out of half a day, no one understands.
Absolutely, I guess. Believe it, it comes up and down the runway, we'll be checking the radar bits and pieces that they use.
I don't know, I didn't hear about that too.
Yeah, it was. I went down past the bottom runway and that came across here, that was one point that came down the centre and then that went round and coming up the edge and I assumed that was probably checking all the radar escalations up.
I would, it's a digging to cover.
Also, I've got something else. I was away from a couple of other meetings, but I think it'd been brought up before, I nearly hit someone, I know we've discussed before, but the photographers. I actually see a gentleman on a huge set of ladders on the side there, and he actually fell off and I nearly ran him over.
Yeah, it is a real issue. I've reported to the council.
Oh, photographer there?
Yeah, so I've reported to the council before, so I've raised this with West Suffolk Council and the police and West Suffolk Police. It is an ongoing issue. We're looking to pull a working group together, we pulled a working group together for the arrival, the first arrival of the F-35s, and we had Suffolk Police out that day to manage the situation there. But it's a long-term issue, particularly with this new aircraft in, we had the F-16s in during March, that attracted a lot of people. There were some days, I think I reported last month, there was one day I drove around, and luckily I drove around slowly around there because I know the traffic on busy day, I drove around at under thirty miles an hour, as I came round, the aircraft came over the top of the ground here, sorry, into Lake Heath, and as it did, some of the aircraft enthusiasts just ran across the road, ran in front of them. If it had been going forty miles an hour, undoubtedly we'd have hit somebody. So, it's an active matter to happen, it's been forwarded to all the appropriate authorities, to all the appropriate areas. So, the plan is to pull a working group together to try and address the issue. I would, me personally, I would love to see no stopping signs around there, I'd love to see a minimum speed limit around there, so vehicles have to keep moving through the area, a bit like you do at a civil airport. But anything that is brought in there will cost money, and it's them identifying who has responsibility and who needs to pay for it. It's going to be some public rights. Yeah, it's going to be a challenge, but it is absolutely an issue that I've set up. I push it out as high as I possibly can.
Live or is it get resolved when someone's injured?
You go.
That road is a clear one, meaning no stopping, no parking. Surely the grass perches must come underneath the criteria of no parking?
Yeah, so I believe they do, but again, it's an interesting issue. And it's, so it is highways and Suffolk Police and West Suffolk Council, and there's a debate about who's actually responsible, because in some ways it's a policing matter, in some ways it's a highways matter, in some ways it's a West Suffolk Council traffic management issue, and nobody's got the resources to be able to put people out there on a daily basis to move folk on. So, that road is a problem for the moment.
But if somebody does get injured, it's going to cost a lot of money in their chest to put together.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
Anybody here?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to have to shake, because I'm going to get a bit of a blow for that.
Scott, bring it here.
How many need to be removed?
Now, item number four, to receive a firm sign for minutes of the rank, I reckon, from me and Helen on Monday, fourteenth of March, twenty twenty-two. I'll propose to... Sorry? You seconded all one question?
Just a question. Just a comment, I mean, I would like an inclusion on the minutes, Graham, so that we've got through a chat with exactly what happened last night. I mean, I was confronted in an aggressive manner, in a threatening manner by a member of the public, mainly Mr Skinner, who then went on to break my glasses. Well, not this Mr Skinner, but the other Mr Skinner. I think that deserved to be minute, Graham. We all saw it. I would have accepted an apology and perhaps ten pound conversation for my glasses. When I said to break my glasses, he made a fit of a comment, and he said, "Oh, they were only cheap." Well, maybe they were cheap, but no, they were broken glasses. So, we could just put that in the minutes, word along that, you can tell the council how I want it ordered, that's a true fact and a true account of what happened last night. And I don't think that's harmful enough. We need to be in a safe working environment. We don't want innocent public coming up and threatening us. Being Covid conscious, we're still Covid conscious, that's why we're in this room. He came to within three foot of me, and he was frying his saliva out of me. Right, we still need to be cautious about Covid. He was completely, completely irresponsible on his part. And as I said, Chair, I would accept an apology, and I'll consider that mat clothes, but I'll leave that in your court.
I don't know what else to say to him, but that's as far as I can go with that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Graham.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Councilman.
No disrespect.
Councilor, what?
I've got pennies left on that. No disrespect to you, Sam, okay? Shouldn't you have stopped the Member of Public or stopped the council meeting? Because it did get a little bit nasty, and as Victor quite rightly says about the safety of us, should you have stopped the meeting, you know, till tempers calmed down a bit?
Okay, Councilor.
That road was already suspended for public participation. The council is not sitting at that moment.
Okay. Okay. Any other things for you to add on that? Okay, those are paid for the minutes. There's gangs, sorry, or, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Gangs or establishments for not here, not here, okay. Item number five, matters arising from information exchange only for full council meeting on the fourteenth of March, twenty twenty-two. I have none, any of yours?
So, didn't know if we, don't know if anyone knew, but Sir David was murdered on support of justice. Didn't know if any of the councilmen were holding a minute silent in remembrance of an MP that was murdered?
No.
No?
Do you want to propose a pardon, I'm quite happy to accept it.
It's not as though I am.
No, but still, you know, respect.
We don't normally do it for the other MPs, we normally, it is for our constituency, right, everyone within that, yes.
But not for any other, huh?
Oh, right, okay. Okay. Uh, yes?
This one, right. In number eight, I've mentioned about, excuse me, the Heritage Centre would be open, sir. The Heritage Centre is open on Saturday for nine. It's also going to be open on Sunday, as well as the Thursday. So, the Thursday, Saturday and the Sunday, up until at least October.
Thursday, Saturday and Sunday. Their times, do you put in the minutes for that?
The Sundays, I understand it, will be eleven till three. Thursday will be ten till one, and Saturday will be ten till four.
That'd be a fair beginning with the office's grandmothers, I think.
But it'd be handy for whoever's listening to this.
Yeah, very handy, yeah.
You know, she quick ad hoc in all that.
Okay. Item number six, just from the amounts arising, if I may say, which pertains to Mark Skinner of last meeting. I would echo what has already been said over being over conduct. Councillors in council business in a safe environment, and that most definitely wasn't. The fact that councillor yourself, councillor Skinner, declared a peculiar interest in the, um, uh, new cemetery meeting, and we were given, I think everybody had this, referred to Tawee Associates and Associates, which does not answer the question whether or not. What it does is just make us revert back to the standards officer at West Suffolk, who has declared that, yes, you do have a peculiar interest. And I believe Graham has been given the details of that. And that is all I will say on that. Well, I shall go by the solicitor's step, not the West Suffolk Mariner's step.
Well, if it continues, I will be tempted to make my first ever standards complaint, and I will take after that.
You can carry on, it's fine. Because I've spoken to the Mariner's officer, so has the clerk, and I know what the clerk's had back, and it's just a list of the rules. And that's how the rules have been set by a solicitor, so I shall carry on as it is. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Fine. Item number six, urgent business. Any item the chairman considers urgent business. I don't have any, anybody else might bring something up? I think it's lost.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. Yeah, I consider that urgent business, and I spoke to my man who was on the scene for the minutes, and the, the, each one of those beams was four tons, and that was strapped onto the back of that lorry, there was no chance, strapped on. You can use straps, but you need quite a few straps, and they need to be reinforced on the corner. But what happened with that, the load had shifted very slightly, and those concrete blocks that just come out of the factory, and there was a very, very sharp edge on the corners, and it sliced right through the weather. This is a new company, and they're based in Brandon, and the clues are in the registration number, they're Brandon Lads, and they're taking over from the company from Thoroughpea, if you want to call it, not completely, but they've got quite a big majority, and they don't use, these people don't use chains, the Thoroughpea WFS use chains. Now, it's easy to say, oh, what if, but what if that load had shifted in front of Mr G's as he turned right into the London Road, while those people, children and buggies were up the traffic lights there? That is negligence, and our life is in their hands. Thank you, Mr Chair. And my second issue is, the Ukrainian flag is flying all over the country, I just want to know the chairman and the clerk would consider perhaps flying the Ukrainian flag outside the office. It's not a political gesture, all it is, is a humanitarian gesture. I went to Suffolk County Council last week, big flag out there, plenty of churches, plenty of public buildings, they've got the blue and the yellow flag. So, would that be possible, Mr Chair?
Can't say why it shouldn't be. Would I have opened that?
I'd say we can agree on that, by general affirmation, doesn't need to be... Thank you, Mr Chair, and thanks for those calm words, Councilman.
Okay. Okay. Item number seven, to receive a written report from the town clerk, should all have it now, perhaps. Is this a right, right, right?
No, I think I've got everything there.
Okay, I would like to just, I'd like to thank the clerk for contributing the report there. And when these, when these people pitch up and consultants, and they go to go to the circle, I'd like to be present on the turn.
Yeah, there's nothing bad at the moment, but it's, I'll get you advice along when they do, yeah, that's fine.
And secondly, and briefly, if you have highways issues with that tree, Graham, at the cemetery, let me know, I might be able to help you on over the highways, because that is a tree which does need to come out.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to go back several years when I worked at council, but I can remember when the gate, we knew the gate was losing some of the hinges, and it fell off and broke that little girl's arm. I stand corrected, but I think we had to pay considerable compensation for that. We, prevention is better than cure, but if you need some assistance on that ground highways, do that.
I will speak to you about that, no?
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Not serving, please, follow me. Yep, thank you.
You've got a sentence here, "They wish to remove," this is regarding taxis, "they wish to remove all requirement for wheelchair accessible vehicles." So, it was a requirement by law for taxis to actually have disability apparatus to taxi.
That's what, that's what they're doing. Or attempting to do, shall I say?
The way the sentence...
They claim that they don't need, they don't need them.
No.
It depends what vehicles they're using. If they have black caps, they are wheelchair accessible. But I don't quite know, it's only if they merge Stede and Spree with Guild Forest Heath, it's the two areas, they're trying to amalgamate them. And they've got this thing, they claim that people don't like using wheelchair accessible vehicles, well, I'm sorry, I've had experience with wheelchair accessible vehicles for forty odd years with my daughter, and I don't know what the hell they're talking about. Because most people can use a wheelchair accessible vehicle, naval body person can, and if you're any confined to a wheelchair, like my daughter is, a heavy wheelchair, it's much easier to have a dedicated wheelchair accessible vehicle that they say is not. You can read about it on their, on their website.
Yeah, but the sentence seems to be, they're getting rid of...
That's what they say, yes.
That's their proposal. I mean, they're also proposing to allow cars up to fifteen years old.
Yes, there's the moment they have to change to a ten, don't they?
Yeah. I mean, I just can't see how it'd benefit Brandon.
What you've got to do is, you've got to, if you don't like the idea, you've got to let them know. It's out for consultation, and they, they can go, nothing will get changed unless you have to do things.
Well, could we ask the council to let them know? Because this doesn't seem right. You're immobilising people with mobility difficulties, they can't even get a taxi. Too long.
Um, we don't know, there is something now happening through the coaches. The, according to Coach Mark in the last week, most coaches were supposed now to have wheelchair accessibility, but appears the government has now relaxed everything, I think, for twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-eight because of the COVID stuff, and I don't know whether this is now perhaps a role under us.
I don't know.
But... It's not twenty twenty-five yet, is it?
No. But that's been relaxed, all the operators have, a lot of operators went out and had all the wheelchair stuff and spent a lot of money, and now they say they don't need it now, that means, so perhaps this might be a role under us.
Pass the way.
Thank you, yeah, I do actually sit on the Licensing and Regulation Committee at West Suffolk. It is out for consultation. They are making some proposals, but nothing is cast in stone, and if you have comments, you can go to their website, or you could bring same to me and I can take it back. But it is purely consultation at the moment, and they are looking at all options. Um, but I do know some of the taxi firms have mumbled about having to maintain sixty odd thousand pound vehicles for heavy wheelchair use, where they only get used once a month. So, um, that's only an opinion, you know, that's something I have heard, it's nothing, again, definitive, so do make your voices heard, that's it.
They are expensive to maintain, I know. But what I worry about is if the, what wheelchair accessible vehicles there are, we're very fortunate in this side of the district, we've got some. They haven't, I understand, from what I understand, you can correct me, they haven't got the same facility that Stede Ferry, Abury, and my fear is that if they amalgamate to, they might, these taxi drivers might find it more profitable being over that side, and we might suffer again, that's my worry.
Yeah, that, that again is an option, because the cabs from Newmarket will go and apply their trade in Bury, because they have the facilities that some of the Bury cabs don't, and that would make them more viable running those type of vehicles. So, with the heavy trade, it might, it might actually be beneficial that they're doing that to us, because then they would maintain those vehicles. But as I say, it is purely consultation at this stage, and on the website, I don't have various facilities for making one's comments known.
Okay. Okay, all right. Number eight, public forum. I will propose that we suspend standing orders for this part of the meeting. Can I have a second, Chair? Both, both in favour?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we've got here those of the public's marks standing tomorrow? Okay, Mr Chair. Okay, but can I let, we'll let the district councillors go first, if that's all right, I'm sure they can say something.
Thank you, Mr Chair, yeah, I mean, perhaps you should remind the councillors and members of the public that got three minutes, and anything over that should go on shift, and that's, and that's whatever our standing orders. The drain covers have been done from the bridge, right up as far as beyond Casino Court, they've made a really good job. How long they'll last, I don't know, I think to the reason of that twelve drain covers they've done, I'm sure that they will be back to do the one at the Great Eastern, but be warned, everybody, that is, that is a treacherous drain cover at the moment, and when they come back to do that, they will do the splits in the Road Service Bridge, Chair. And finally, Chair, Suffolk County Council Cabinet, a vote against the Sunica Solar Farm, I mean, obviously you're all aware, that would have been the, could still be the biggest solar farm in the land, two thousand eight hundred square acres. How it's presented at the moment, they're not happy with it. And just a small result, which we have had, with Tan, Ossu Technologies, and Graham is familiar with Ossu Technologies, because they're the people who pull all that material out of the side, and they turn right at the traffic lights and deposit, deposit it on Mr G's window, and the first thing Mr G does is go into the office and tell Graham about it. They will be relocating to Retton twenty twenty-three, that is the plan. That's only a small reduction in HGV, but that's better than nothing. And that concludes my report, my candid report, Mr Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. You have any in the district?
Well, yeah, it's sort of district, because at district level, we have been campaigning, as you know, for an HGV restriction through Brandon High Street for a long time. It would appear that our MP, Matt Hancock, has now started to take this on board. Um, it would appear that our MP Matt Hancock has now started to take this on board, um, has started writing around residents of Brandon asking for their opinion on such a scheme or the need thereof or what their views are, and indeed for any other issues that may be, um, within the town that they would like to bring forward. I can't imagine it's got anything to do with next year being a action year, but we'll give him the benefit of the doubt on that. So for those that, and I know this town council did bring in a resolution to support a, an HGV ban through the High Street, um, which would not affect any of the traders in the middle of the town and those at the end, say from Aldi upwards or Tesco's the other way, would still be able to be serviced from either Munford or Milton Hall, no issues at all. It would save county highways an enormous amount of money on repairs to the Berry Road, Thetford Road and, uh, all the drain covers in Brandon High Street, um, and make Brandon a much nicer place to live in. And obviously avoid those sort of problems with shed loads through the High Street, which we see having and more and more often. So, yeah, he, he has it on board and I ask everybody to consider what their thoughts might be and pass along to him.
What could possibly go wrong with you saying?
Yeah, I would just spin off from that and I did, I did ring these hauliers, M O T, I did ring these hauliers and remind them that products coming off that former mill bank site, they have signed up to a section one oh six, they're not supposed to come through the town, that's in perpetuity of that contract. Regardless of what, um, he, he realised that and the best thing to do is say, well, when it's setting busy, I'll send the vehicles round the A one three four. But this, this section one oh six is a legal document which has not been enforced by Breton County. It was drawn up by Breton County and they completely ignored it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to apologise to the councillors with the exception, councillor Lee, it's my favourite last name, I will not be apologising to them. If I had had my question answered, I would have not got so up high. And I think following on from what I've heard tonight, I'm going to lay down a bullet to yourselves, if you're so certain that your monitoring officer is correct, can we ask the chairman and the council to invite the monitoring officer to your next meeting to explain how they come to that conclusion? Because I've wrote those rules, I've had a solicitor myself, and it does not appear that that is truly so. In fact, I've contacted your monitoring officer and I have been writing a copy of the rules, which they sent to me, which is exactly the ones I put off line, and they themselves will not actually commit to that actually being true. I've got it in writing from the monitoring officer, Theresa Halliday, and I think it's very unfortunate that councillors from West Suffolk hide behind the monitoring officer. What I would say to the councillors, I think to drop something like that onto the chairman, whether it be my son or anyone else at the start of a meeting, is totally inappropriate. You're experienced councillors, you claim that there was a problem, why did you not? Perhaps you can answer this. You said, your words were information given to us last evening. So therefore, why did you not relay this information to the clerk or chairman before the start of that meeting? Because what you did, you brought the meeting into disrepute. On a further note, I will just say that the comment made about the glasses where I said they were cheap paraglasses, if you listen to the recording, I did not say those words at all. What I said is anyone could clearly see your glasses weren't damaged. You need to listen to the recording. With regard to the taxi carriage issue, I will just tell you this, I've spoken to a couple of councillors and the reason they want the, the lifetime of the taxis extended to fifteen years and the reason they want a little bit less on the wheelchair, not because they don't want to provide it, it, it's factual, Dave's probably got the right point, it is actually that economically they cannot afford to run those vehicles, having a replacement at one time because every five years and putting all those facilities, they're not actually getting a return back on what it costs them. So, you know, there is a balance, you either push that to the hill and get rid of all the taxi drivers or you accept this and provide a good service. Years ago, we were lucky if we had one whole wheelchair accessible taxi from Bereshead that we could call. Now there are actually several, I believe, that you can call and there are lots in Bereshead, I will tell you. So I just think we need to bear that in mind because not everything is financially viable. With regard to this incident, I would just like to make a comment, I don't really think this is something that needs to be mentioned here about legalities. I would have thought that the police would have taken action for this. This is an insecure load and it is a legal and criminal offence. So do we know whether or not the police could further action?
As far as I'm aware, when I spoke to them, they weren't on the inside.
Yeah.
They should be on.
Yeah, that is the issue. And my final point is, I know they're all crazy on the lorry ban, but I do think it's worth the point I've mentioned.
But we've blocked it again.
Oh, sorry. I think it's worth thinking about this lorry ban. I'm not against it, I think all the lorries that come through Brandon, yeah, we don't want them, but we have to be mindful of local businesses who employ local people. Now, some of those are obvious. Now, imagine if we lost the cut the lorry display out Brandon, some people would jump for joy because they think we have the artists coming up our street, but you are going to lose one of the highest wage trades in Brandon. There are several companies with people in this town who are wild. So before you actually, you know, sort of ban every lorry, do really think about, you know, perhaps allowing people who are original from Brandon to actually live and work here. That's all I'm going to say, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I want to just clarify, couldn't you quite hear? Did they prosecute the driver of that vehicle or not?
I don't know, but the chairman.
But they should do, I mean, I've always understood, if I dropped a load on the road, that was really dumb.
If you had something fall out of your car off a trailer, you wouldn't be known for that.
Absolutely. I mean, you're supposedly able to roll a load over and the load stays with, stays fine.
But as far as I'm aware, Norman, on the day, each of these blocks, um, I say we not created shortly after, and speaking to people that were there, the blocks weighed two, six and eight tonnes, some of them, so, yeah, serious weight. Yes, obviously at Mr. G's, but anywhere on pavement, it could have been a real impact. Um, and as far as I'm aware, on speaking to police officers, prosecution would be tried to be examined and I can't see any reason why they didn't have the evidence there and yes, I expect it.
So they are prosecuted.
It's in police hands and not in ours.
That's fine. Um, due to the lack of notes in there in relation, I'm a little bit, because I've been absent, what is going on with in relation to certain councillors and safety, uh, Mark Skinner, just because I haven't been filmed in.
It's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes. Is it all in the minutes, is it? Clearly, well, it might be, but fifty minutes it isn't.
You might have to go for a few in the minutes to see.
Right. Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go back to the, uh, the ACV ban, if they ever implement an ACV ban. Local people apply for a licence and then they're not subject to the ACV ban. People like Travis Perkins, people like Binghamside, people like Robert Ashley who operate HGVs locally are exempt. What some of us are trying to do is try and stop people like Jack Richards coming through the town from Fakenham, and he's been doing it for twenty years, he runs fifty lorries from Fakenham. Why doesn't he go A one three four button mills? He won't because it's four miles shorter. Where there, that's the traffic, we want to stop the David Turner lorries and, uh, and the, and all the Barley lorries that come from Holcombe and all the lorries that come from Fakenham, it's just, it's not local traffic, they would be exempt, they're making, they make an application and the registration number of all their vehicles is put in that automatic number plate recognition system and they're exempt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, continuing on that, there, there's an awful lot of traffic that comes from Lincolnshire and Norfolk and they just come through Brandon instead of using the A ten, which they could do, um, or coming through the preferred route, which would be Munford, Thetford, A eleven, um, and they'll come through Brandon. And the surprising thing is whenever there's work on our roads, like when the Never Crossing was shut for a couple of days because of holds covered or when they were shut, when the, um, roads in the High Street were all resurfaced, they will find the turn-up routes and it didn't, it would be a sin of thought. Um, and I actually had a word with some of the drivers and they say, well, we come through Brandon because we like it. It's no different, in fact, it's easier to go the other way because it's less gear changes, we use less fuel. So there you go, I mean, there's all sides to this story, so yes, we don't want to close down the local, um, uh, businesses or have them move away or employers compromise, but we do have a severe problem here that is almost unique in this county, well, it is unique in this county. Um, it needs addressing, so.
Just want to get this clear, sir, the proposed ban for HGVs starts from Aldi's, did you say? And finishes near Garage?
This is purely my.
It's a small area, Brandon.
No, this is purely my opinion. And if you look at a map of Brandon, if you put the start of the HGV ban just after, on the way in, just after Aldi's entrance.
Right.
Aldi can be serviced from Milton Hall and all of the industries that side can be serviced from, uh, from.
Wee.
Uh, Munford, sorry, Munford. If you then come to the traffic lights at Tesco's and that's the cutoff at the other end, Tesco's and all of the industries can be at that end of the town, on the west side of the town, could be serviced from Milton Hall.
Right, so you've just cut out a smooth section.
So you cut now.
And that benefits how?
High, High Street, London Road, well, without the through traffic coming through, Berry Road is not going to get all the.
When we get traffic, go straight up.
Yeah.
Up, up Green Road, Brackner's and all that way.
Well, no, you would have to include Brackner's Road in it.
Right, right.
But, but that way you would then stop all of the through traffic of HGVs, but still allow local stuff to go through. And it poses.
Essentially, we're looking at just shutting down the High Street blocks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Essentially. Um, and quite honestly, if you've ever walked up the High Street and had some of the foreign lorries with their exhaust that vent on the opposite side to our own, it is most unpleasant for kids, imprudent and parents, it might dog shies away from. So.
As far as Brandon's done, any sort of, um, I don't know, I think someone's mentioned before, put something out, get that for people's opinions.
Well.
That's what sort of has been sent out. Yeah. It's, it's the hand, yeah.
There's the hand, I certainly have on my campaigns, I have run my campaign directly with that in mind and been elected on it, so people are cognisant of the fact that I am opposed to the HGVs coming through. So, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Um, just to, just to call on all this excellent, I mean, um, the company may harbor police prosecuting, what you have to remember is the Ministry of Transport will be involved in this, they will look at this and now hopefully look at the full licence on the company and if they find any problems which should have been done, if they find a serious thing, the company could wind up with an all licence very good.
Hmm.
Will you come back to a point? Yes, sorry, um, I meant to just say another thing, but I forgot to mention the fact that Covid was mentioned tonight, I don't mention things as a fair point to make when you're sitting so close to each other, we'll just say that. And the other thing is, um, anyone know what's happening to Bankers Bank?
All, all I know is it's been stripped out inside, I looked through the doors the other day, it's been stripped out completely inside, um, I heard a rumour of something off a restaurant perhaps, but that's it. It's only a rumor.
I can tell you that is actually not true.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and I will just say that, um, we have, I have actually secured the, uh, vehicle from the bank for the town, hopefully, but I am in contact with the owner, I need someone to know about it.
Councillor Wood, what do you want to talk?
Yeah, a couple of things, you say about with the, you know, the HGV ban, the answer's naturally a bypass, but Elverdon took forty years to get their bypass and they had a few deaths at the crossroads, which made it even quicker to get their bypass, but it still took them forty years. I've been there forty odd years and we did have a map that came around and there was four options, A, B, C, D, and I voted for D and I still think D is the best one, that they had the road that come out just the other side of Hives, in between Hives Farms and Chickwick, and it went all the way around the industrial side between the country path and Roundus Road, it crossed over Berry Road, alongside Green Road, it then crossed the Thetford Road by the old quarry, it crossed the Santa Down Road with a roundabout, it's a huge roundabout there, and then it crossed over the river and the railway and come out by Track twenty three, went all the way around the industrial units, the old mill bank site, and there was going to be a huge roundabout by Track twenty three where you've got, um, Edna's Corner there for weeks. But that being an odd. But I'd like to mention to Victor, I know, it's a sore point for me, these people at boundary post with their lights, as of Saturday morning, the lights were still not working and it seemed to show that now we're in daylight hours, they've had to be in darkness during winter. Now the summer's here, it's not quite so bad, but we shouldn't have to be going on for months and months and months about four lights on a small road of about a hundred yards and there are a family of people, meaning loads of children, you know, I find it ridiculous that it should take so long for these lights not to be fixed, you know? Um, I know Victor's been trying, but it's like flogging a dead horse at the moment, um, they don't, the developer, the builder, they should all be responsible, the housing association, they should all sort these lights out. These people pay their rent, their rates, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and they should be able to live at night with street lights operating. We live in roads with our street lights working, why should these people in boundary posts have decent street lights? And they are new street lights, let's face it, it, the estate's only been built two and a half odd years, three years.
Okay. Do you want to come back on that, councillor?
Um, they promised me that they'd be done the seventh of April, uh, with a risk that it may slip back, which has slipped back, I will, I will bring them again, I will try and persuade them to come out, I mean, other than that, uh, we've got very little influence because that's private land, private land, we're nothing to do with highways, we're not doing something, but I will try, if you can tell the residents, I am trying.
I'm hopeful.
Thank you.
Okay, well, within the meantime. Okay, I have number nine, correspondence. Graham, you've got something, Mr.?
Yeah, I received a, a letter from, uh, the Secretary of the Heritage Centre, uh, thanking, uh, councillors, Lieutenant Palmer and Witten, uh, for a donation from their locality budget and also from, um, councillor Carrick from the British World for their supporting and, uh, into the, uh, Heritage Centre over a period of time.
Well done. That's part of number ten.
Just a year, um, that's, if you get the opportunity, go down there, they've got some new exhibitions there and they're really interesting and try and support the local Heritage Centre, the people up there do work, uh, the carpet, it's, it's clean, it's clean and stuff, I was quite impressed, I went there this weekend and I was, I was quite impressed, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I have number ten, um, to approve the payments for March twenty twenty two, all my copy of them, and we need a proposer. Do you have any of the second? Councillor, thank you. Any comments you can leave, please? Let, let that pass a little bit first.
Yeah, just two.
Okay. Okay.
The new bus shelter, George Street, £6,760. I must have been asleep during the meeting when this was disgusting to buy a new shelter.
Yeah, this is part of the, uh, grant money that we received from, uh, West Suffolk. This is the last of it, very last bit that we've got.
When the grant, when you applied for the welcome back grant, you applied for certain things and that was one of the things to, um, to improve.
Is it kind of a big door brick?
No, no.
What, for nine, seven thousand pounds?
It's got to have a living roof.
Pardon?
The living roof.
Living roof?
Not garden. It's a safe room.
Put his head chair on it.
Safe room.
Eco-friendly, Peter, eco-friendly. Good for the environment, supposedly.
Yeah. It's also got a buggy bay and, um, wheelchair, wheelchair straight buggy bay as well. Just the current one has.
Is it going to be complete with, um, drop curbs? I don't know the one at the time, at the moment.
That's not our.
But one of the problems is that you put in a lovely bay where somebody can sit in a wheelchair but they can't get to it because there's no drop curbs by the bus stop.
You don't need to the bus, does the bus?
No, no, but to get to the.
Well, you have to work out where you're going to get on up. You have to round Brandon.
It's a problem all round Brandon and it has been raised several times by.
And it's not just the drop curbs, it's people's driveways which are lethal.
Yes.
So, I mean, people, if they want to go to the bus stop, um, to get on a bus in your, in a wheelchair, you will know exactly where you can get up onto the table. I'm afraid that's life at the moment.
No, I only mention it because it's been mentioned here.
Okay, I, I still find this is a rather a large sum of money for a bus shelter. I really do. If you're going to have bus shelters, fair enough. But there's other places, but just as a bus stop, just a hole. You know, if, if you're going to have it, I mean, I.
Well, basically, no one's already there.
No, no one's there, yes.
I did get your point, Commissioner, but when we, Brian was putting it, it was put in for certain bits in the town areas, we could only spend that money on what it was put for and where it was put for.
Right, so I'm saying for that type of money, why didn't you have a nice grid bus shelter?
Well, because it's not, it's not too good ready.
There was criteria as well with it, so that's what we had to do.
Okay, I'm not going to win on this one. I'll think it, so. Did that come out to, did you get three quotes from people that make bus shelters?
There was.
Yes, and I actually, I actually got, I got a thousand pound.
Leicester Chicks?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there was one for 11,000. Um, there was one for, um, nearly, it was about seven in actual fact. And I got this one, uh, for them to, um, knock this one down.
But a lot of companies, when they deal with local authorities, they're always a lot dearer for the council taxpayers than if it was for an individual that actually wanted that bus shelter, you know?
Well, I'm not going to spend 7,000 quid of my money to, uh, to buy a bus shelter and try and claim it back through expenses.
No, I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that. No, I mean, when people, uh, when councillors want something done, they get these first. As soon as they know it's a council authority, the product is a lot dearer than if it was for an individual.
I think, I think the opinion's going to be, oh, we go, it wouldn't lie. But that's what the money was for, so we've had to spend it on that.
And then the other thing, um, just a query, the insurance. For what? James Allen Limited, nine, six grand.
That's our, that's our, um.
For the town hall?
The council insurance, it includes, um, the vehicles, the buildings.
Everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, blocks, top and barrel.
Yeah, and to be fair, it has gone up slightly, but it's not as much as, um, with, I mean, they did, they did a survey of nineteen, I think it's 19 companies that are prepared to quote on our insurance and this was the best one.
So it covers the Old St James?
Yes.
Side, the central building? Yeah, and the town hall and our vehicle.
All our liabilities.
Yeah, okay, right.
I think Commissioner Kenny had a comment before we move on.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just, uh, our friends Ellis Whitten, what did they actually do for 2,741 pounds, Brian? What did they actually do for that?
They, they look after our health and safety. So as and when we have an issue, a problem, anything that they're on course to do to resolve things like that.
Is that for four, three payments or?
No, one payment.
That's one payment per annum, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's answered that question. And, uh, three from the bottom, and I'm sure there's an explanation for this. Pressure wash, QJ, melt floor.
Yeah, there was a number of items, uh, we got from Fenn Gate Fasteners. Um, the pressure washer was, uh, our one that was packed up and without it, you can't look after cleaning mowers. I mean, you know, the, the gate is, you know, it's our ad for that runs around the town. So we can't have that little tatty, so.
And Sunday items, basically.
Yeah.
That's answered my question, thank you, Brian.
That's all.
Okay, we'll look at both then. Those in favour of the councillor as well? That's okay. You like a handout?
I was, I was dreaming and it was slow coming down.
Okay, I have number received incoming expense statement against the budget for February 2022. You just go. Okay, I have number 12, grant application. There's two discussions to consider, the S137 grant from the Island Happy to Sing at White. We've all got it, have you all got a list for it? I hope you can discuss it, I've heard.
How much?
Eight hundred, isn't it?
Yeah, eight hundred, wasn't it, yeah? So on top line, yeah, grant for 800 pounds to establish the group as a regular member for the community. Yeah, fine.
I'm disappointed that they've just come along from the Happy to Sing group today. It would have been nice to see who they are or.
Well, I believe, I believe, um, councillor Fields is a member, but she's, she's not well, so.
I think she was the representative tonight.
Ah. It's a pity they couldn't, uh, come along and perhaps give us a rendition of the National Anthem or something, you know? And that's, uh. And also on a, also on a more serious note, um, I'd be happy if they had a bank account. They haven't got a bank account as yet, and I'd have, you know, we've, uh, we've insisted on bank accounts. So that's the normal procedure. But as I said, I would be interested to see what other comments you may have to turn up. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Okay, Commissioner.
Um, I mean, these choirs do serve a very good purpose, they, they upgrade benefit. But I'm very concerned at the way this one's trying to start off. They are charging subs for two, um, meetings in a month. Fifteen pounds for the month, that's quite a bit. I'd like to know how many they've got joined because there was about eight. Um, and I think, I think to pay out for a professional choir master for wanting better, is perhaps a little premature. I would have thought they would have done better to find somebody to get the enthusiasm going. Um, and I have known somebody that has been a part of a, well, a glee club they call them. And, um, they started off with, yes, just an enthusiastic member. I think to start off with very bitter, uh, a bit, bit over the top here. And I presume that money not actually, I mean, that, that's a lot to spend.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman. Is there any way we could say, uh, withdraw and then come back when you were screaming better? They could hone her and screw on her, then represent her with, with a bank account as well, well?
Yeah.
I mean, me personally. Personally, we wouldn't be up to this cancelling, cancelling.
Yes, if victory is councillor Kenny, he's proposing to defer it, I would second that.
Okay.
Can we, can we do that, Brian? Rather, rather than fail, does it fail?
They're not come back, so I think I'll give them the rest of the citizens, really.
Uh, I was, I can drop the line there.
Drop on the line, we can query any points, we can say anything.
Do you need to propose a second for that?
I think you were going to propose.
Propose.
So we're setting second.
The extra, just above now.
Okay, those in favour of deferring?
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Okay, item number 13, a note of minutes on planning the meeting, committee meeting, hold on one, the fourth base for 2022. We'll just note the minutes, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number 14, a resolution to exclude the discussion of press, the pursuit of the public body, business committee act, knowledge and sense. Public and press will exclude you under the temporary and due to the content and nature of the business to be discussed concerning votes, plans, staff and contracts. I'll propose, Commissioner Moore's going to second, and we'll have a vote for that. All in favour? Everybody? Thanks, everybody. To get picked up, I don't expect any minions, we need to break.